Mr. Walsh, can you hear us?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a little, it's a little better. It's difficult, but it's better.
Did the volume get turned down?
There.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, you're coming in loud and clear, Mayor.
All right, that's that big loud high school teacher voice.
All right.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right.
Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Normally, we have no technical difficulties, so I guess it has to happen once in a while. All right, public comment. Do you need me to reread the public comment piece? Are we good?
I'm bad, Mayor. I just believe that the people online did not hear.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
We have the welcome and encouragement of the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions will be joined. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to ask from the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be allocated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four days each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting citizens are allowed to address the council. If you would like a response, please state your name and then provide your address to the clerk or the city manager if you would like a written response. I mean, we have something slightly different written, but I'm not going to ask you to read your address.
No, that's one three four seven.
You don't need to do that.
Okay, I'll go. So, I'm here on behalf of the central secretary of maintenance, Secretary Street. Giving you guys an update. We did a yearly update. You guys will believe it was in March. I'll have to be exact. It was in March. At that time, we stated that there was no adult semi-college plan that we were aware of. That has changed. So, and obviously, if Molly was here, she could say that. She's across the street from it, so I'm gonna get in front of it and let you know. We made some changes to the lease. So, they don't lease the field for the season. They lease it game by game. And I'm present at every game to make sure that all the rules are followed. They have, the biggest rule change that they have, they have to contact the county to have everyone on site. And they did. I have photos and I posted them on Facebook. Deputy's being there and whatever. It was a nice clean game. We had no issues. They cleaned up the field afterward. And now they get to lease it for the next game. So, it's game by game. I think SWAT team has surrounded it. So, they'll expect another game. I mean, that's gonna be one game. So, they're not guaranteed season. They're guaranteed game by game. Okay? So, the next one will be, the first one was the twentieth. The next one will be June third, and it will be an easy game, seven o'clock kickoff. So, and there are two teams. There are the Central Michigan Bengals and the West Michigan Venom, I believe. Then one's kind of a green bill, the other one's actually out of the sea.
Who provides the insurance for this?
Actually, the, the league they play for has the, has a liability policy. And then friends in the field on the three million dollar nonparticipate that we, that we have. We've covered spectators and things like that, but not the actual participants in the sport. The same thing, you, you have to have your own liability insurance. Yeah, they, they have to cover their players. We cover everybody else that has. So, and our adjustment is on fifty bucks. The other thing is, it was brought to my attention, my main part of it. We had a great secretary, Rebecca DiPiazza, several years ago, when her kid got out of the program, she stepped away from the board. I took over as the acting secretary of, I believe, two thousand and thirteen. We just didn't find anybody to, that wanted to come in and work with me, basically. And I dropped the ball on, we're supposed to file on manual update renewal with the state for our nonprofit status.
Just bar.
Would law, correct. Just state that you didn't do it. Somebody caught, somebody caught that, brought it to my attention through the city manager, actually. And I contacted the state. They sent me a renewal packet. That had now been sent back. So, we are good to go. Should be updated on May ninth by the week. So, we had to pay the twenty-five dollars times five years. And then they have a digital forty-five, a hundred and fifty bucks to work out this. And I had to file those reports. So, that has been done.
Okay.
Okay. And that's, that's all I have. That was the change from March. I just wanted to make sure, because obviously, you'll know that there's an adult plan there, and I backed and marched into their way.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, anyone else for the comment? Anyone on Zoom for public comment? Go on one. Go on twice. I don't see a hand. If you, if you wanna be seen on Zoom, raise your hand. Anything? Am I correct?
Yep, yep. All hands have been raised. No one has unmuted. So, it's time to go.
Moving on, public hearings. We don't have any. Is this kind of like a motion to adopt the agenda?
Oh, maybe support.
Any of the process? And when I go to my man, I'll be able to say this is by the thing on. All of the posts, we have an agenda. Moving up, action. A motion to, and this will be either to post the vacant city manager position internally, if no candidate applies, or is selected, then post the city manager position externally with Walsh's post service. Or to post the vacant city manager position concurrently internally and externally with Walsh's municipal service.
Sure. How do we do this? We already have a motion to hire, to hire Walsh for doing recruitment. So, how do we make another, another motion? If we already have a motion.
Well, we've already hired him, and that's why he's here, but it doesn't necessarily to recruit, because he's internal. It doesn't say that he's external.
I, I just wanna make sure we don't have to change the motion.
I don't think so. Attorney.
No, we don't need to change the motion. I mean, to the extent that very conservative, we basically will, but I see we're as conservative with what you have to do.
And I think, Frank, can you speak to this? Do you see any problem with this?
No, I'm willing to go whatever direction, obviously, the council wants to go. If you wanna post internally and have an internal process and see if there's a manager that comes out of that search. If there is, if you vote me affirmative, then I will just switch over and do the finance director with the same kind of contract you have. Or if you don't go that process, and you wanna have a full-blown city manager process, we can do that, and we would start that. It's really, I'm willing to do whatever you wanna do, regardless of what the contract says. Now, I'm, I'm here to serve you, so you let me know what you want me to do.
Does that answer your question? More questions?
No, not, not, yeah, I guess we'll do it.
Okay, but I mean, does that answer your question about the, the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Do you wanna have a discussion, or does someone wanna make a motion to one or two?
I think we, we have to make a motion for this.
Not, I would think that's where we're at.
What would you like to do?
I would like to make them off.
Okay.
We have to ask them to move them off.
Okay, is there a second? I'll, I'll make a second. Okay, now, any discussion? You have a motion and a second?
Yeah. They agree. Number one, nothing to do with Darla. Darla's great. I do, we're, I feel like our transparency, guarantees is not very good right now with the council members. We are a council, council manager council. That means we all have one vote. We are not, we have, we are not to all vote on things. And we did vote, and we did vote to hire him to recruit a city manager. Okay, and the way he does it is fine, whatever they do, or if we do it, but, but if we do it, wasn't there. It was, we were hiring, yes, you know, to do the city manager thing. So, I don't know how, we already voted, or I don't know how you vote back on the vote. Number two, I'm just, I'm bringing this up so we can discuss it. Also, if that night, we had, all of us had all the information that some people were privy to. We might have voted differently, but that night, we didn't have that information. We were cut from the dark, and so we didn't vote on, with all the information. And that's not something that we should do. All the council members will receive the same information about a matter, particularly as it relates to the business title for the consideration. No one will receive different or special information from our Cedar Springs policy. That would tend to put one council member at an advantage over the others. So, I'm afraid that some of this lack of transparency is making us look like fools. I want everything to be more transparent.
Sure.
So, we need to know what was intended at that time, and why it wasn't told to us. Why we were voting on one end to table it, and on the other end, it followed through. Because with the information that we had, that's why we voted the way we voted. And then I just, in, in my thinking is that I thought right away, when it came to us, that we gotta do a search. We have to find the best candidate for Cedar Springs. We are representing, representing Cedar Springs. And we have to know all the time, you know, all the people out there, applicants out there that are available. We owe it to Cedar to go through all of them. And then budget of star is Darla is, I can't see why she would not be at the top of the list, or a high almost there. I would rather see her get position after going through all the applicants that are available than have people wonder if she was slipped into, into the position. And just because I don't want the city right now at the bad, they, they are not very, they don't think about us very well. Okay, we have a bad reputation. So, I wanna make sure that that reputation doesn't transfer to Darla. When I'm thinking she's gonna do all, you know, our bidding, which is, it is her job to do our bidding, but not show us the other facts or present the other facts to us to make sure we know everything. Not just present the facts that she wants to present, and I don't believe that she is that way at all. We have had some problems, we have. So, that's, that's where I'm at. Now, I can also tell you, I will be fine with any way that we vote tonight. I don't think it's gonna be a loss, really, either way. I just believe that we should be doing what we're supposed to be doing for our sake.
Sure.
Definitely.
So, did you, you look like you had moved that.
I do. I don't think I've ever seen a motion set up like this, have I?
We, we do once in a while, where we have a couple of options.
Yeah, where you have two options and one motion.
Yeah, and then it's up to the council to decide. I mean, you've done it before.
It would've been nice to do it, I believe, though.
Well, and, and I think, I mean, if you want it, can you speak to that?
I just don't remember ever having to divide one motion to two different.
Well, they're two different motions.
They're just samples. So, like, yeah, motion to number one, post the vacant, or motion to post the vacant. And we can change them all, I think.
Right, well, well, or we can vote on this, and it's voted yes, or it's voted no. I mean, there's variety of different ways.
I just don't, I don't think. I, I I want, I just wanna do it so that people see the springs, and I do believe if Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh would continue with, by helping us finance, finance director, that would be a good thing for us. I guess a difficult position than having Darla, the city manager for town here, to guide and interact in hiring of that person. That would be sort of.
I got a quick question for you, please, do you think that? I thought you said I don't know about experience with that.
I don't think we were, but I guess.
So, I don't know why you heard that. So, I just wanna talk about, um.
Oh, you're letting me?
So, we didn't, I didn't know. I was told, like a lot of you, that we did not have an internal candidate. When Mike called us up, he was telling me, like, you're gonna have to go out, there is no internal candidate. And I was then told later by a candidate internally that, no, that's not true. Well, I don't know what to do with that. I mean, I don't know what to do with that. And maybe that's, I mean, maybe that's my, maybe my opinion. I don't know, but it's a point at which we have an internal candidate, and this is, this is my, this will be the third city manager I've hired. Whoever it ends up being, I, I've interviewed, we'll be hired Mike, and we'll be hired Paul. Um, and as a person who works for a very large, not for corporate government organization, um, we hire internally first if we can. It's actually required by our contract to post internally. Because the idea is, since we hired internally, we have people who already knew your system. And it also, like, when we hired Mike, we did two rounds of interviews. And I'm not like, I was told, but I think it was a total of twenty-six hours. I took two days off of work to be able to do this. And
We did it for, for, for us.
Yeah, and the first round we did, we, we offered it, and then the first one tried to sell it. And we didn't like any of the other candidates, but it sounds good. But we didn't feel any of the other candidates were a good fit, so we put it back out again, and then came back, and then it was, it was trouble. And there was no internal candidate who knows how things work.
Well, we really faced them, don't know whether there's gonna be more than one.
Right.
We're just assuming that there would be one.
So, that's why the motion that's on the table right now is to, to post it internally and see if the candidate applies. Now, we've been told, and this is not a secret, we've been told after the city manager left, until otherwise, that there isn't at least one internal candidate. And to me, had I known that, that would've been our first thing, if I would've said, oh, we have an internal candidate. But we weren't even set up with an internal when I asked previous city managers, do we need an internal? He said, oh, no, you don't.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the reason of why I just want to make sure that we don't.
Many of the things you've said are correct, and I believe the same. I believe that if you're going to build a strong, strong leadership within a location, you give them the opportunity to develop and move into a position within this organization. We have requested several times in the past, city managers find an assistant or a deputy.
Yeah.
If we had had that deputy.
Why did he need money for?
Wasn't the money for it. If we had, I'm not banging on Mike, because I know me. My language, but I'm not, that's not the point. We, if we had had this new position, then it's possible this person may have been interested also. Have to hold a position someplace else, and we may not have been in a position where we're searching right now to somebody, because we already had somebody in place. Okay, I'm not doing it to certain person, it's the program, and this is the way it should be.
I agree.
We have, currently have problems somewhat with the idea that Mike did not have time. Mike did not have time, because he did not have a assistant. Okay, when he said he couldn't find anybody to beat his qualifications, what were his qualifications, and why is it so difficult? I mean, the same thing that they've said about disqualifications initially, and again, it's not gonna, it's not like this is that.
You did agree to that.
Okay. But we may not have been in this, this position yet. Because why it has to be, maybe we can walk. It is in our policy. It is something we can do. I feel we owe it to the current employees here, give them the opportunity initially for that chance to do so. And because we do have somebody, the idea of her is qualified, that person should have the opportunity to say yes or no. And then give us the opportunity to have somebody else to do in the future that's working here, so as far as we get to a point where they may have that option.
And to be clear, this, the motion is to apply. That we would post it internally, and an internal candidate then apply, and then we would review that.
Just the rest of my time. We're in need of a city manager. If this happens, and the candidate hits us, now we're gonna need somebody to build that position. If we're taking the time to do both of these, we're setting our wheels, and we're running short steps all during that period of time. I think we might set our sails, want to fix them internally, if we can, and search for the second. With the idea that we're mine to fill.
At, at that point, I just wanted to ask one question. I know nobody else, not everybody's had a chance to talk.
Just real quickly, please note for the record that our pro town Nixon arrives at seven thirty-one.
Um, my question, if we do make the choice to have Mr. Walsh do the finance director instead of the city manager, is that possible to be the same? Because I've been told that that cost is not the same. It would be, I mean, have we signed a contract? Can we get a lower cost? That, and that's something we can discuss if we decide to go.
Here's, here's the point, okay? If we hire him, despite, which we did, and I was one of those that voted for it, we're now paying him to find a city manager. We then select them within. Now, we turn around and hire him again, but hire the financial director. What is the cost then? If it costs a little more now, that it costs us less in the long run, then have we gained or are we lost? So, if we're looking at financial.
No, I'm not looking at financial, wow, I just wanna be out.
If we're looking at the expense, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking at the expense and the time that we're running short steps.
And I will advocate, having done the previous one, that, um, that cost is variable. Because for example, we went through a whole series of interviews, right? We then offered it to a person, the person initially took it, and then, I don't know, three weeks later said no, thank you. And we then had to do it again. And that was an added cost, right? So, I mean, there's a, there is no, like, it's X dollars to get Y person. And if we have an internal candidate, and one of the things I spoke, spoke with, as part of, when we, I asked you all on the truffle about talking to Mr. Walsh about our policy on hiring internally, because again, I come from the world where it's actually, can actually be required to post internally. We'll have to post internally for certain, I was firing, before they can go externally. Um, my question was to Mr. Walsh, when Ms. Newlin and I, Ms. Johnson, sorry, Ms. Johnson and I contacted him, was, you know, we, we hired you to do this, how, like, is it okay to use you for a different thing if we end up hiring internally? He won't, I said, we still want you to vet an internal candidate, and we still want you to look at your resume. So, like, if we're posting internally, the person still needs to apply for the job. I mean, it's not a, it's not a deal.
There's so much to apply for. How do we objectively say that the person, if they get the job, is the best? Looked as it was a party of one.
Um, if we get preference to internal candidates, I mean.
Comparatively, but we don't have a comparison. If only one person internally applied, how can you say that that was the best candidate that we could've hired? You can't.
Can you, can you see, you look like you were gonna say something.
I will not.
Oh, okay.
It looks like you were gonna say, it just looked to me fake. And also, if we just focus about one candidate, if we end up accepting that position internally, and then turn around and say, we would now like to work externally, yes. That puts that person on blast, as opposed to having an open mind, trying to find the best candidate that we can. And that, the internal candidate that we're talking to about, uh, there's a very high bar at this point.
Yes, no question.
We're gonna have to get a really good competitive for me, again, so that there's room to be a better candidate, I'm well aware of that. But we either lose our transparency and lose that part to hire the one, or we don't hire the one, and then we have to say publicly that we didn't wanna hire that one, which is, if that was me, I would put my job. And then the, the third option is that we put that person that we're saying, uh, come and, come and get the position. We've got this incredibly high bar caliber person, and then champion that person when they actually went out, which is highly likely. But we might go back out into the public and say we have the best candidate, because we don't know that. It's just objectively not true if we only post internally.
I know.
Sure.
I also work for a very large international company. They do the internet, or they do internal along with that term. Oh, it's not a, you get us, you choose, and then you do that, but that's, I've never heard of that.
Oh, that's totally out.
Never heard of that. And it doesn't make, it, that it can't put that one person in an act situation.
Well.
Where you can open it up to the people, that's our job is to find the best person in handout. It doesn't, whether they're, they are here or not, we have to open it up to the external, I feel externally, and then we make that decision, repeat it, and I, I know at that time, I know it's not what you hope.
And if we're still talking about the internal candidate, I don't see how that changes if you open it externally. Like, if that if, I personally feel, if you don't wanna open it up externally, then you're nervous that you don't think the internal candidate can keep them out. And I don't feel like that. And you're, I don't feel like that. I feel like put them up.
You're showing your system too, when you're only showing, when you're only got one person.
Well, you, we don't know that you're talking to the person.
But it's a small city, it's, it's like, it's, we're talking about one.
Nice. So, the last time we were looking for a city manager, one of the things that we did previous to putting out that we were looking for a person, is we sat down as a council and with the first thing we were hoping with the search, and decided what qualities were best, and what we were looking for, and who are we and what is our vision? Because we need whomever our next city manager is to have a similar vision to the council. And so, I have no doubt that we have an intelligent, well-qualified internal candidate, we'll give it. an intelligent, well-qualified internal candidate will give it. Um, but is their vision like ours? And do we have a great idea of what that is? I know what my vision is for the city. But do we collectively um, have a great handle on what our collective vision is? Um, I, I think that this is one of the things that is worth spending money on. I, I would, I would advocate for internal and external at the same time. Because I think we need that that visioning um, of the council to figure out what are we looking for? Because it's not just experience, it's not just degrees, it's not, there's, there's got to be uh, this is who this person is, this is where this person sees the city in this year, this year, and this year. What direction are we going? Are we staying a better community? Are we looking to be the next Grand Rapids? Are we somewhere in between? We need to figure that out for us. And I think that we're, we need some assistance and some facilitation to do that. And I I don't see how to do that without someone who is experienced in this search. Um, so that's why I would want that Mr. Walsh can services for whatever candidate we would choose.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question about that. You you hired him.
Right, and he's going to help us with the positioning for an internal candidate. And then go externally.
I think, I think he would, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, again, um, I can handle this however the council wants to move forward. Uh, there's a lot of ways to do this. I'm looking, hey, you know, I was the city manager there for six years. I care a lot about the community too.
Yeah, you're the city manager here.
That's right, yeah. And so I want to do, you know, Chief Gross and I go way, way back. And so I want to um, do what's obviously best for the community. There's, there's a lot of ways to look at this. One way to look at it is and again, I'm not trying to pick which way you go, I'm giving you options. But one way is to interview internally and then make that decision because one of the things that's going to happen is there's a lot of competition out there. I think there's th- three openings just in your county. There's probably twelve statewide. It's a buyer's market, it's a very tough recruitment environment right now.
Just to clarify, by competition, you mean there's a lot of opening and not a lot of candidates?
It it's, it's a tough recruitment environment, it's going to take a lot of work. One thing you could do, it's an option, is to int- inter- uh, interview internally and decide if you want to go forward internally and then take the next step. And I'll tell you why. Candidates that apply for this job, they're very wise to what's going on. And one of the things that's going to impact your recruitment is they know you have a very strong candidate internally that may very well because they're all going to ask me, is there an internal candidate, is there an internal candidate? And so the stronger candidate shy away because they're, you know, they they know what they're up against when you have a strong internal candidate. So the one thing you may want to do is to vet that before you move forward, because if, if, if you you don't want to end up with two recruitments, that's the thing you want to avoid if you can. And so, yeah, so we could, again, whatever the council's pleasure is, we can do this um, simultaneously. Um, as some have suggested, go out and see all the candidates that are out there. Um, but then you're going to, just so you know, if we do that and we talk about the high bar, um, tha- that was the term that was used. And if you hire, go through a process and you end up hiring internally, uh, then you're faced with the opening for a finance director. And maybe you can pull that off um, doing yourself internally. Finance director recruitments are more difficult, and I'm just telling you the facts, not trying to steer you. Finance director recruitments are more difficult than city manager recruitments. They're more ca- they're finance director ca- worthy finance director candidates are hard to come by. I just want you to do what's in your best interest and not um, not end up with um, not knowing where the path is on this process. So again, either go internally, have a process, make a decision. If you do that and you feel like, yes, the candidate or candidates internally match where the city would like to go, that's probably a better way for the city to go. And then you can go on and do a search for the finance director, which I would do, more difficult. If you do the, if you don't, you're going to impact your recruitment somewhat because you're going to have an internal candidate vying for that position. And it will water down the candidates who will apply for it. Uh, but again, I'm just telling you what the recruitment world is like right now, and we can go whatever way you want to go. I'm ready to go in the process that you choose.
Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, could I ask you one question?
Yeah, I was just going to say, and then I think Lisa has a question on, go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Walsh, how long would you suspect us to take in the initial recruitment if we went out and tried to find outside recruits at all for this time? Uh, as far as the time span, one month, two months?
Yeah, well, um, I've got to get the surveys back from you about what you're back to, I think it was Councilman, uh, Mayor Prom Dixon, if I recall.
Dixon, yes.
Yeah, yeah, who said, we really need to determine what we want to, and that's what that survey is for. It asks you a lot of questions to help you articulate what you're looking for. We put that into a profile and immediately get it out. So that's going to take two, one to two weeks to get out as soon as I get the surveys back. I have a number of them. I started the profile, but then I stopped. So I get the profile done, usually it's a four-week recruitment, we can shorten it to three, th- three weeks. And then you have about three weeks before you're, you're finished doing your interview. So it's going to be two months before, at a minimum, before you name your manager. And then if they're employed somewhere and need a thirty-day notice, you're into the third month with that. Depends upon who you hire and where they're employed. The minimum I can get it done and do it right is two months from today.
Thank you.
Um, did you have a question for the floor?
No.
Okay, um, we want to go back to the time thing and the lack of staff. If we would have started this recruitment right after we voted, how many weeks ago was that? And that's why we voted the way we voted, because we knew there was a time front at that moment with the fact that we knew. So if we would have started this three weeks ago, we wouldn't have three, you know, wouldn't have all this time. And it is going to take time. But to me, Darla feeling like the best candidate and being the best candidate is worth the time. And if we need to do something to help them, um, maybe get somebody in here that can do some paperwork or something, you know, let's do that to help them. Um, I don't want to rush it because of the timetable. I just deeply feel like in the long run you're going to be the mo- the best candidate. Don't you want to know that you were the top? It's like, that's what I want for you, because, because I respect you. And I don't want the city to look at you like it just lifted to do our bidding, you know? I want it to look, I want it to be above board and right and fair. And I want you to be there, I want you to be the one, but I want it done right.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I just a couple of thoughts, I probably have some human like may have already been said. So first of all, the, the fact that um it may be hard to find a finance director, strikes me a little bit as, well, you're my best employee, so I can't. That's, I am back when.
I know, I, you can't have a job that's made of running director.
Yeah, I, I'm a spot.
And this, by the way, this conversation happens with teachers.
Yeah, you know, you know, that, that's A. And and B, I, I think that what would be most helpful, um, it sounds to the, to the pool of if we already had a pool of external candidates. What would be most helpful to that is if we already have an answer as to whether we felt like our internal candidate's vision matched ours. Um, what I would, what I would like to see honestly is, is that visioning get done. And then open it up to internal candidates, see if our visions match. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, and and there's a lot of qualifications and talent that we can look for. But if that vision is different than ours, that's just not going to work out. So I, I think that to get the best pool, we need to, we need to handle our in-house first. And and money be damned, we're going to be we're going to be with this person, whoever that person is for at least the next five years, going to impact the trajectory of the city for the next fifteen. I mean, it's, it's a big deal.
Yeah, so how do you know you have the best candidate if you only have one?
It's question of vision.
Well, we got to bear it out, though you don't have a better candidate.
Imagine it's better.
So we don't have, we can objectively say, this is the best candidate when you're comparing to yourself. So if you're going to be, and make one person, it's also the worst candidate.
There's, there's, if I can't even say it. I've been involved with the city for a long time, through part of my, my Malibu Board. I can tell you that not every candidate that was chosen as a city manager here with the exception of Frank, Mr. Walsh.
Yes, sir.
Uh, was not the appropriate person for this place, okay? I can, and that went through boards and selection and everything else, and you find out after they're here that geez, they aren't quite what they told us they wanted to be because they wanted the position. Okay, you cannot be sure you ever get the right one. And you cannot say any education, you may not get the right person after you think you have the right person. Coming from industrial and the management, I can tell you the people were promoted in there that probably never turned their promoted, but they sang a good song. Okay, you can never be sure of anything until after you have them. In my personal opinion, the person that has been revealed somewhat here has given us the knowledge of what she's about, what she thinks, and her performance type, which gives it a good step up. Anybody else, anybody else we hired, we don't know. They may not be what you think they are, and that's why I'm saying it may take time. It may take two to three times around trying to select somebody that's going to say, yeah, I want the job here. If we have someone who is interested now, we offer it to them, now what we're looking for is a person to fill that position that maybe they do. Who better to give us a judgment as to whether that person is qualified or not than the person who is fully qualified for the position that they have? And that's why I'm at. We have some problems here in this city that we need to get corrected by the right person to come in here and then some factors that have been broken down. I feel this person has that. Having said these things, there is a motion on the floor. We can either, in my opinion, take a vote on it, it can either be voted now or it can be voted for, if it's voted down, then we have the right to go to the second and have the same vote. And this, the whole purpose of putting on the floor then that motion to begin with is to create the discussions that we have had. I normally don't get quite as involved in some of the discussions I have here. I have been through this with selection. I'm a firm believer in the person that we've had here and the capabilities that they have. I do not know the backgrounds that they had, but the fact that they left as a city manager someplace else in a management position similar, that gives us some background plus we know her ability to work with the books, she knows the financing. And who better to guide somebody coming in who may not have as much knowledge as what she has, be a better person for the position that she has? This is where what's so important, in my opinion, to have a deputy manager to begin with. And we did not have that. We would not be nearly as bad in the position we are right now if we had gotten what we were asking for and had budgeted for to begin with. Okay, I, my, my opinion is we vote on the motion that has been made. If it fails, so be it. We have now taken the step to either then accept the second one or reject that offer.
Is there, is everybody else?
So I guess I'm calling for a vote.
Well, I, I just have one final comment on this. Um, there, there, I, I've heard a little bit of this concept of like the quote-unquote best person. And I don't know that, like, there is a single best city manager, like, I don't think it works for that. Like, I don't think there is a best nurse, I don't think there is a best history teacher. I mean, would you, are you a wonderful nurse? Are you a wonderful nurse for the?
It's beyond, it's beyond.
But do you, do you, do, are there other people who work with you who are also high qualified? And are they highly, are they the best fit for the specific nursing that you do? See, the thing is with the city manager, like, this goes to your point about the idea of the fit, right? Is, is the fit, the best person for here based upon their, a big piece of it is knowledge of the community? It's experience in that wall? It's shared vision, like, that was one of our big struggles. We kept a person last time that had less experience, but we thought more shared our vision, right? We, I mean, you could choose the person with the most experience and it doesn't necessarily the person with the most, so I don't know that there is this counter, that we quote-unquote best person. I mean, again, maybe this is because they come from a teaching background. And we, we actually contractually recruited a job to take this in from there before it was asked for. There's, there's a thing in my district right now, because there's a physics teacher opening. And a very experienced teacher has put in for that job that would shift them from one building to another. And they're going to get that job, right? And they're highly rated, and they're going to be wonderful. And parents with the other building are saying, no, that shouldn't be allowed. We want them to have to stay here.
Which is your job, you can't.
Right, which is what I'm hearing a little bit of with this.
I don't think I'm urging that at all.
That's not even what we're talking about.
In terms of the best, I just mean in comparison, who we thought was the best candidate. Not that they're have, like you said, there's never going to be the best or the best one ever. But which one, when you're hiring, that's who you hire, the person that you think is the best.
But what I would advocate is anytime you have an internal candidate that is qualified, they're going to have a quote-unquote best tipping point.
Great.
Because.
Person against external candidates and let them win it out.
I wonder if the question is being called.
Okay, the question's been called. I, I don't, I don't think that we have to answer the question right now, it's just a lot of discussion. We have to watch this. It's the, I don't necessarily have anything more to say. I'm saying this because I don't know if Ashley was done, and there might be a couple of other people that don't want to know. Okay, but I, I got you, but I think when we, Jerry did call the question, but, but on that. We still, we don't, we have to answer the question, we're not ready to answer the question. According to Robert's rule, if the question is called, you got to vote.
That makes no sense. When you're during, when you're in a discussion. You can't just call it in the middle of the discussion, because you were the one that called it.
Yes, you can, you're silly, but.
Did you ever really say it or anything?
I just. I think we've all kind of, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Personally, I have a, the internal candidate and my opinion, I would never say that I can't have it because they're bringing the position. If they're the best ones that opened to the thing, I would, that would be my go-go. So I would never. So I would never, you know, somebody in a position that they wanted to move up in or they thought they would be better than others, and then say, no, because it's gonna be too hard. Which is why I'm saying we should go internal and external. Mr. Walsh said it was gonna be a simple, and I think we should still do it. So I just wanna put that on the table. I would never be somebody in a position to.
If, if you're wrong, I will withdraw, like it's all simple. Okay.
I appreciate that, but you're not wrong.
No.
You're not wrong, but I don't think that you should call it until we're all done with.
Okay, that's all we were, sorry.
Can I ask one last quick question? Can your, um, our lawyer?
Sure. What is your question? That's what I asked him to get here. I asked, by the way, I asked both Mr. Walsh and our attorney if they could come to make sure that, to your piece of transparency. And also, to be clear, if we do choose to post internally first, Mr. Walsh is going to go through the process of, we will put out our surveys, they will do, put out their, um, their, their whole, you know, their, I started to call it curriculum vitae, that's not what you always would call it. A resume with your credentials.
And they'll do interviews, like.
Just like if we had to post, if we just, you quote-unquote give preference to the internal candidates to basically choose them first. Because what you're saying in that process, which is why I asked the question about our handbook, and because I wasn't clear, Mr. Rice told me, I already knew what our handbook said, is that we should prefer internal candidates.
I do my homework.
I, I understand, and I think maybe you were on the handbook committee even at one time? For first name, no?
Not here.
Maybe that was you.
No, he grabbed me and I was like.
He drinks any of those things. Um, we'll kick that, because I, I will, I will say, I've read a lot of documents for the city, but I have not read the entire personnel handbook. Um, because that was one of my questions, was do we have it in there that we prefer to internally interview first, to hire from within? And so then you got that response from Mr. Walsh, which is, we do. Um, can I? Yeah, I'm just saying, this, this is the, this, so I then asked them to be here so that you could have that conversation. Yeah.
Oh, is there a subsequent question?
Well, come on, uh, the first, the first of motion, um, says that if no candidate applies or is selected, then, then we would post externally. So yes, we are gonna interview and then decide before it went externally, which is not. Which I wouldn't wanna do that anymore. But, but what, that's what that's saying, correct?
Yes, that's how I read it, is you post internally, run, run through your internal candidates, and then you can go external.
Okay, cool. So then also with our policies, we don't see anything with either one of these selections. We're in our legal.
There's no legal question, if the policy question for council, how do you know? See, legally, you're not required to post internally and then external. You're typically, typically tied to the current or how the council decides.
Okay, just wanted.
Right, which was part of what my question was for the straw poll, just to put it back. Because again, I work at a place where it's actually contractually required. I, I understand that. That was why, that was why I wanted, well, personally, I don't think that I'm allowed to. It, well, no, that's been clarified, but that was the straw poll question, to find that out. Hey, anything else? All right, so motion one is on the table. This actually. That's what I'm doing unless, are we done?
We're going back to them now, then.
That's where I'm at. So what's the session, Jerry, do you wanna call it?
Oh, that's fine, please, please draw it to the vote, that's fine.
I'm ready to vote if there's no more discussions. Are we good? I know, I understand.
Right, that was just for my benefit.
I can go down the row, or I can go down full call, y'all have preference. Yeah, Mr. Axerson? No. Mr. Grove?
Yep.
Ms. Hamel?
No.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mayor Tommy votes, yes. That is, one, two, three, four, across the room. Four, four, three. All right, so we're gonna post internally. So, just to be clear, we should all get our surveys to Mr. Walsh about business. We're gonna post internally. Then, Mr. Walsh, you're gonna look at our surveys, and then you're gonna get the credentials, but I don't need to go through what he's gonna look for, resume, information from internal candidates, and we know we have one, but I don't know, we, there's another, who knows? I thought it was the one that was declared. Right, I, I mean, I actually said that, because he's still, like, still yelling, but he's.
I know.
But I think one of the guys that's the one that's really declared wants to quit his industry, I don't know. So it could happen.
Yeah, if I may?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a very, um, moving process, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to stay with you. Um, so I don't see us, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the need right now to do surveys and do a community profile when you're interviewing internally. So I, I think the thing to do is for me to, maybe, I'm trying to figure this out, because this is a very unusual start. So I guess what I would, I guess what I'll do is I'll send a survey out, get it back, and what I'll do then, and those are all confidential, send it back to me, and I'll put together some sort of compilation of what you're all saying you're looking for to candy, and then I'll get that back to you. We don't need a profile to try to attract candidates when you're only interviewing internally. I'll, I'll submit a compilation of you, of your, of your thoughts and what you're looking for, and you'll have that as an interview doc, document. So you have that, and I can help you with all the questions and stuff like that, and prepare you for the interview, whoever you're gonna interview, and go through there. If you select someone, uh, if you select an internal candidate, then I will do a whole, um, I'll start on a second search, basically. And then I'll start, if you select internally, I will then do a finance director, uh, search for you. And I'm not worried, you have my word on what I'm gonna do. I don't need to change the contract as it's presented unless you want me to. You just have my word, I'm gonna help you through kind of both processes, if that's where we end up. If you end up not hiring somebody internally, then we create a profile, and then we go out and we do a, a recruitment for a city manager. Um, so this is just gonna be a step-by-step process, but the first thing you'll get is a survey from me talking and trying to put together really the goals and vision of the city into a document.
I, I think, um, to kind of piggyback on what Mayor Proton Nixon said earlier, it has been seven years since we, as the council, have had to collectively talk about beyond, um, when we have a, uh, the, the document that we, we did just want to announce the, the. Strategic plan, there we go. Beyond the strategic plan, we have not done, like, a collective vision of what it is that we think are, like, where is our city headed? And the last time we did it was seven years ago, and there's a lot of people who are uncomfortable now who are not in help of that. So I think it's, and, and the city has also grown and changed. And so I think that that's probably super helpful just to get the, those surveys in, um, to then be like, so this is our vision.
Let me, can I, can I just say something?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm willing to do whatever you want, the hometown discount. I mean, Cedar gave, Cedar, Cedar gave me my start in my career. I used to go into Powell's Market every day and buy my soda. So I should, probably should have drank so much soda, but anyway, um, what I, what I could do is I could for, forget the survey, because it's all confidential. Maybe what you need is a group discussion, and maybe what I should do instead of the survey is come over, and we just have one evening of discussion, and you together lay it out for me, instead of it all being seven different surveys.
That's a great idea. And could we do it maybe in like closed, is that a closed session thing? It feels like.
No.
No?
No, no, you, you can't have a closed session for that.
Okay, you're worried about, um, what's the past, that we're gonna get together, get, be able to get together.
Well, that would be.
Your future.
I guess that's up to us being able to be available, because he's pretty flexible. Do you want us to pick a day?
And I don't perceive that.
I have.
Our internal people can sit around and wait.
I have four full days and three packed in hand days. And then I am, I'll tend to live. I'm going to, because it's a moment, I am, my life is new day.
Wednesday night's been pretty awful.
I think we're looking at a Thursday, because that seems to be.
I will not resume.
Would you just prefer a survey? I mean, does it make it easier for you?
No, I actually think it would be very helpful. I mean, I, okay, the survey's easier, right? But I really do think that Mayor Nixon is not wrong. Um, I do think that it would be helpful, I mean, am I wrong?
I'm not, I'm not saying it wouldn't be helpful, I just know that not for a long time.
Right, no, but this is the thing, that if you can find a day here in the next couple of weeks, that I think it would be helpful. Am I wrong?
So you, uh, our next meeting is the eighth, so it would, surely should be sometime after that.
What about that following, what is that following Thursday?
Eight, nine, or about three weeks. No, I wanna, we just do it next week.
I can do next Thursday, can you all do next Thursday?
I, it's far and all right now.
Yeah, I can.
We like those Thursday.
Actually, I'm giving, I have a big long exam, but if I'm just early after five, I'm probably fine. And at seven is fine, I just can't do early, is what I'm saying. No, it's a discussion, yeah, it's a discussion. Zoom is, Zoom would be totally wonderful if you, if we're not voting yet.
Yeah.
So does seven? We're talking about the third.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
We're talking about seven o'clock.
Yeah, I can be here at, at seven or later. And if we do it earlier than that, I can be here just on the.
I agree.
Well, but it's an option, you love options.
Yeah, we could, we could. So.
If you can't be there, you can do.
I got, I got you. I got you.
For the Mayor Proton?
Oh, yeah.
Is the building booked?
Next.
On the next, uh, Thursday.
It's available Thursday at seven p.m. Are you good?
And if none of us are available, then.
Well, this is my question. So we're gonna discuss what we're looking for in a city manager.
For a vision for the city.
Internal. So the internal candidate will be sitting here and listening to everything we're talking about. Is that correct?
Knocking off the chair, I saw.
Well, but it, it has to be in an open meeting, so yes. Every, everything we do has to be done in an open meeting unless there's.
And looking for negotiating.
That's probably how it works to a government entity, where everything we have to do is.
I'm not even talking about that. I get, I get the role, I'm just saying that this is so different than what, you know, I need to. You shouldn't be here.
Well, we can have her not here if you prefer.
And it's not, because I don't love her to death. Saying it's just like, she's gonna burn this candidate.
It's like coaching her.
And it also shouldn't, it also shouldn't be a secret.
It's not me, it's just like, she's gonna go online looking for.
If I'm looking for something in particular, and I'm trying to.
She'll be like, ooh, I'll make sure it's you.
I don't know that.
I'll make sure you know exactly what to say.
She probably will be like, oh, yeah.
Right. I, I. Go on the audio or recording.
Listen, you would be dumb not to listen to our conversation.
Amen. And any external candidates?
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to be honest with you, but like publicly.
I.
Awkward and weird to discover.
And I also would advocate that what we're trying to do is talk about this, because again, we are studying individual people. What is it we are looking for, not necessarily in person, but in a vision for the city.
But that would be.
And then, right, and that's the, that's, and then.
For me, it holds no value for picking a candidate, because.
No, because if the candidate doesn't come and reflect exactly what we just told them to, to tell us.
I know.
That's not that then.
Okay, okay, I, I have another, I have another suggestion.
Then the other piece of it. Mr. Walsh?
Yes, another suggestion, okay? I'm, I'm trying to work with you on this.
Yes, you are.
Why don't we, why don't we do, why don't we do the survey for the internal process, and that keeps it all in a more restricted way, and you'll be the only ones to see the document? If you decide to go, if you decide to go forward and do an external one, then we will have a group visioning, does that make sense?
Fabulous.
Or we can do a group vision after we have chosen a candidate.
Well, he's saying.
If you wanna do a special meeting to talk about what we want for the.
And we should do that with our. Yeah, and she's with, with the manager. We definitely should.
Cause I got lost.
So we're doing a survey? Okay, go ahead.
So we're gonna do the survey about the candidate?
Yes.
We're still gonna get together on the first to talk about?
No, not on first.
Okay. Okay, I, okay, that's whatever you're doing.
All right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna compile a document for you and get it back to you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, can you say that again?
Yeah, I'm gonna compile a document based on the feedback and get it to you, and only you seven.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that, that it makes perfect sense. When did you find out that, the survey?
Uh, the survey will go out within forty-eight hours.
Oh, you haven't sent it?
Well, I did, I did send it, but I'm gonna be sending it again.
Okay, and you're sending it to our, um, city email?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So can, when would you like those surveys back? Is like by, by Tuesday soon enough?
Yeah, it, it'll like take you about fifteen or twenty minutes to complete, and if I could get them back by like Tuesday, I can put the document together and, um, and then we'll, I'll have to work on getting the job, um, internally posted and all that, so there's some things to do here.
And you will do all of the, um, vetting of credentials and background check and all of this stuff for an internal candidate, just like you would an external candidate, correct?
Yeah, um, yeah, the background check is a third-party administrator who does that. Um, so, yeah, um, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But step one will be getting the survey out, step two will be getting the job posted internally, step three will be compiling the data and getting it back to you, and then having a date to get the resumes or resume back to you, and then they'll be setting up an interview and me writing interview questions for you um, based on the, on the, on the data that you get back to me, because the question should be tied to your vision. And I'll get that all back to you, and then you'll set up a date to interview one or two, whatever candidates you have internally. And then if you make a selection internally, then we're gonna start all over again with a finance director position and go forward.
And that's gonna be a lot harder, correct?
It, you know, there are, there just are not a lot of qualified, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there too. I mean, we'll, I'll work with your manager, and we will find someone, regardless of how long it takes.
And I'm guessing that we have a financial director that could keep the vote.
Well, and that at that point, that's between the manager and.
Yes. Other than we are just going to ask.
We're gonna write the check and say, yes, I do.
And then whoever the city manager is, is just like the previous city manager hires. Hires the finance, hires staff, and that all. But um, because it is a difficult condition to fill, um.
There is, is that where the way that went? Um, it made it easier to hire.
I don't know. We'll see, we'll see what he finds. But I'm also wondering if, I'm gonna ask you all to roll around in your head, because I think, I think um, that Mr. Walsh was right. We, what was it, three years? We tried to get the previous city manager to hire a assistant. Maybe we should ask Mr. Walsh, when this is all started on, to help us to research for an assistant city manager.
Well, I'll ask the new managers.
I'm asking you to roll it around in your brain as an idea that you consider. Because the previous city manager suddenly had so much trouble trying to find a city manager. That, and maybe again, we need to talk about job description, which would be a thing we would construct with the city. Whoever the new city manager is, along with some other staff.
We're, we're solving a little problem.
I'm just, I just want you to roll it around in your brain, since we already have Mr. Walsh on the table, that that might be another thing going forward. That's all I'm saying. Think about it. I have this weird idea that you should think about before you vote on them. I don't know.
That should be said about a lot of them.
So, okay, so with that, anything else? We all feel like we have our metrics, we're not meeting next Thursday?
No.
That you're gonna fill out? Nevermind.
I'm not this one.
Okay, we're not meeting next Thursday?
Go on the survey out by Tuesday.
If you're having trouble getting into your city email, Howard?
Oh, I'm, I'm not. I'm having trouble getting home.
Yeah, I get that. I literally got locked out of my city email twice today. Yeah, it kept like changing my password. I felt like, well, I feel like it was an internet thing today. I was having trouble with free program and. Yeah, well, I, I got it. Anything else? Comments, council comments. Ms. Powell?
I did go to the former, or the uh, last library meeting, library board meeting. Um, unfortunately, our wonderful, beloved library director has resigned.
Yes.
She's giving us two weeks.
Oh no.
Very sad, very, very sad. And um.
Amy Craig.
When we retire. So we ha- are also going to have to find a new library director in the near future. Um, Kami has let everybody all set. All the instructions, all the staff is ready to take care of everything the library will need. Pretty close anyway, I'm sure things will come up. Very happy and um, appreciative that she did that. Carol Dawes from uh, Lakeland Library Services, who comes out and helps all Lakeland libraries came and um, gave a very interesting um, a great direct about library finances. One of the things I thought was kind of scary was she didn't uh, want us or want the library board, or it's probably be impossible to get another director before the Soul and Cedar Springs deal is settled. So she said it wouldn't be wise to start looking yet. Cause everybody's gonna say, you know, we, we wouldn't want to apply for jobs or we didn't know what's gonna happen, so.
There's also no interim.
No interim, but she, Carol Dawes said she would help us in any possible way she can throughout this transition. And um, she also said, which I thought was very interesting, she said, each one of these parties for this library should be paying the same rate. This uh, indiscrimination between uh, one party paying a third of what the other party is paying was not acceptable.
Who said that, Rose?
Uh, the uh, Carol Dawes, she's been.
She's the director.
Yeah. Wonderful lady, very knowledgeable. So I think she gave us all some great directions. And um, I was very happy that she, she was there and she said, just call me when you need something, ask questions. And she would do everything she could to help us out. And I was very happy that uh, right now we're in good shape and um, Kami's left. Our library in good shape. Lot of tears, I'll tell you that much.
For that staff showed up.
Yeah.
To cry.
Yeah. And she said there could be nine people hanging on your legs when you leave that day crying. So anyway, good news and bad news, I guess. So thank everybody for dying and uh, on we go.
Mr. Ross?
Good for second. And I think we're heading right direction.
I agree.
Um, I just wanna say, in our policy, it also says that when we vote on something, we all vote and talk about it as one, once, once our decision is made. I don't have any problem with that. I enjoy the people that give their opinion. Jerry, tonight, you know, I, I was like, this fool's standing up and applauding. You know, I love to hear from you, Jerry. I want to know your opinion. I wanna know everybody's opinion.
Absolutely.
You know what, I'm gonna give mine. But I just wanna make sure we have enough time for discussion of everything. And you know, we have to try and make the best decisions. And they're not always gonna be the same, my opinion, of that best decision. It's not always gonna be the same as anybody else's. And personally, I don't want anybody to think that that anything is personal. It's all to do with what we're supposed to be doing for our community. Um, and I love all of you guys, and I'm glad that we are actually discussing things. Not just boom, 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 voting on everything. I think that has happened for uh, too long. So I'm glad that we are coming into home. And I think having people on the board for more than one year is helpful. Um, because you don't really grow into yourself until you've been on the board for a while. And then you start to realize what's important in the city. And you start to realize how important and wonderful your staff is that works with you and helps you with everything. And um, how wonderful your coworkers are. And you know, it's just, that's, that's the way it is and I'm just glad we're in the right place.
Yes, and I wanna say, I also am having voted differently than you. I'm glad, I, I love that you came in with notes of new things that I wanna talk about. I appreciate that. So I just want you to know that. The three.
We all know that.
And we love the city.
That's where I, I saw, I thought, and my, my kind of view was, this is how I thought, it was the right thing to do for the city. However it goes, I wish everyone the best.
And I appreciate also your advocacy. Absolutely.
Um, yeah, I appreciate the discussion. Um, and it's a good, I'll get that viewpoint. Uh, and.
I'm, I'm gonna expand on some of what Rose said in my comment.
Um, yeah, I'm talking, I'm really moving to them. So. I mean, I'm so probably not, because I still found out.
Yeah, good discussion. I think that's the wisest discussion you have to do.
Yeah, I think you're right.
But very much because um, because we care about the happiness. And, and.
Not angry, not angry, just passionate and loud.
And only because we, we deeply care about what happens here and we take seriously the rules that, that we kind of. So I'm thankful for that. And I think you guys should show up and share my passion.
So I'm just gonna say, reiterating what everybody said, um, and we don't often have three boards. And I don't think that that's because we all are kind of all in lockup. I think it's because generally our vision, and I'm hoping that we see this to be true, although maybe it won't be on our survey, that our vision for the city is generally aligned. And I think here it's more about process that we're disagreeing about. And so I appreciate all of the conversations in how it worked. And I absolutely want people to vote their mind. Even for free, absolutely. So thank you for that. Thank you for that. Um, so then I just wanted to piggyback a little bit, because Rose and I, we've seen shoes just stopped for two and a half hours. Monday night. She sat down with a chair, great at the beginning. She has been running libraries for forty years. And she opened with, wow, this is a show with velvet curtains wall.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Well, how am I supposed to invite you? Talking about a library or being, then.
That's true.
A hot, hot.
We get that.
Start going to the library.
Or going to the library or anything. I don't know what else to tell you. Um, and there was almost no one answered me. It was you and I and Mr. Hopkins from the Southern Township and then library staff.
One staff and another lady.
Um, yeah, the, the secretary's daughter, the library board secretary's daughter. And Ms. Dawes explained a whole lot of stuff. That, for example, Lakeland is in the process of requiring all libraries that participate to have a minimum notice that is way above point four. She came in with a very colorful document, literally like colored in, and we can, I don't know if digital copy are, share that. Of course not. No, because they won't. I've asked, I've offered, I have all kinds of things and I cannot miss them. So I'm hoping to tell you again. So um, other than Rose holding her phone up in the air for three hours and then urging me when she has to go to the bathroom, saying, would you please hold my phone, cause I got to see. So I mean, this is literally, and Rose and I have been at every meeting for a year. Two.
Trial.
So, I mean, um, so a couple of, just the big takeaways. And then I talked to Darla about, I don't know how to get this information out there, because it's not recorded. And one of the things that we talked about was having the staff come in and do like a workshop in the office. So that would be the piece of it. But um, just, there's like, there were like three big takeaways that I took from it. One is, um, she said, you're not gonna be able to hire a director. And even when this is done, you're telling us to be able to hire a director because. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just say it, because of the way the previous director was true. At the end, I mean, it's, so then two, this point four, one point two, they're gonna set a minimum. And they haven't established exactly what that is yet. She's on the committee for Lakeland, but they're gonna establish a minimum of knowledge. And it's gonna be way above point four. So, and then they're gonna give people an incremental time to get there, but you're gonna have to get. Two, there is no world where um, someone has a contrast with someone else. And it's so natural, which is what we talked about. And then three, there is no world where someone has a contrast and gets seats on their board. Like, that's not a thing. We are in a, a very unique anomaly. It's too fast. So, and then to, to add in all of this um, not recording meetings, not allowing people to put things on the agenda, not allowing the library director to put things on the agenda. It's been this ongoing, making friends with Caroling for three months, I think, to give this presentation. And it's been literally not allowed to be put on the agenda. So, this is where we're at. So I just need to like, and then um, I also wanna be really clear that we, when we started, said, we had an offer of point six, point eight, one point oh, over three years, we'll keep on the board. We put that up. And I keep hearing from people, oh, we're in negotiations. To my knowledge, nothing has come as a counteroffer.
Isn't that something we should have voted on before it went out?
We did. We did. It was part of that. It's in that package.
That when we voted to sever?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We made that into an offer.
Okay.
Here's the, here's the option. We are saying it has to be this. We were saying, here's an offer.
Yeah, for sake of time, we're off topic of it and we're in a special meeting for a specific topic.
Yeah, I'm just putting this out as council comments, because I wanna make sure people are up to speed. So.
After the meeting.
Right, so you, just as a, so I want you to know, this is, this is the stuff that's out there. So one of the things we're looking at is trying to have Ms. Dawes come in as a workshop to explain a whole lot of this. And I want you to know that there's. Awesome. And then um, just to be clear, there is, there is no other offer. Because I know there's a lot of that needed stuff. So I just feel like that, I'm asked that.
June eighth, Carol Dawes will be at the city council meeting.
Right? So that's what we got. Because it was like a three-hour day, Monday night. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that everybody looks to speed on that, because that was literally last night. Yes, we want a manager. Yes, I did. And yes, we're gonna have the manager. And I guess I could also ask if Mr. Walsh, and before I go to the manager, does their attorney have anything to add?
I thought, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, do you have anything, do you feel like you have a set for where we're headed?
It was great to see all of you again tonight.
I love you, Frank. You're awesome.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, that manager.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ed, return.